Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our second teleconference Village Board meeting. Before I get started, I just want to do some housekeeping and take a roll call, make sure everybody's with us. Deputy Mayor Borzak, are you here?
Here, I'm here.
Trustee Brown, are you here?
I'm here, good morning.
Morning. Trustee Graham?
Hi, Rick, I'm here.
Thank you. Chief of Police Mike Tracy?
Here.
Chief of the Fire Department Jerry Terza?
Yeah.
Village Administrator Becky Hanson?
Here.
June, are you here? June? June, are you on?
Oh, I'm here. Sorry.
Okay. David Collins, DPW Supervisor, are you here?
I'm here, good morning, Your Honor.
Okay. Trying to think if I forgot anybody. I think I forgot any... Oh, yes, Beth, I'm sorry. Beth, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
With her hand in the air.
Is there anybody else here that I forgot to mention?
Yeah, me.
I'm sorry.
You.
So I'm sorry, one of the most important people, UK. And Bob Hefner was going to try to join us. Okay. Bob, are you here?
Yeah. Here.
Okay. I think that's it. Anybody else I failed to mention, just let me know. All right, I think that's it. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge of Allegiance, the flag.
The flag, the United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, with that, UK, would you start us off, please?
Sure, Your Honor, I'm going to talk about something that happened in 1916. Please remember, everybody out there in LTV land, this is 1916 I'm talking about, not today. All right, there was a polio scare in our town, and at that time, our town had a health officer. Wouldn't that be a good idea today? Dr. David Edwards. The town also had an East Hampton Town Health Board, which would be another good idea, I think, for today. Remember, there was no village in 1916, so we're only talking about the town. Dr. David Edwards, of course, as many of you know, was a longtime doctor in East Hampton, and he was also the person who discovered Rocky Mountain Fever and the exposure of that here in East Hampton. So this is what the town board did. They passed certain resolutions to try to stem this polio epidemic. They passed a resolution that stringent measures be taken by the authorities for the suppression of care of any person afflicted with infantile paralysis and to guard against the disease getting a foothold in their community. So they authorized Health Officer Dr. Edwards to perfect such measures as made caution inspection of all children coming into the town in any manner. Also was ordered that no child under the age of 16 should be admitted within the town of East Hampton. It was also ordered that no children under the age of 16 be admitted to any moving picture theater. I have no idea where the moving picture theater was. It could have been where old Kelly's liquor store used to be. So this is what was going on in 1916. And remember, the town board then was consisted of the supervisor and four justices of the peace, and they met in the town clerk's office, which was E.J. Edwards, which is now the Star Office. So that's all I have to say, but I was talking to Deputy Supervisor, Deputy Mayor Borzak, and she mentioned she had a recollection of the polio scare when she was a child. And I think that probably Mayor Lawler and Trustee Graham may have remembered their time during the polio, and the rest of the people, you're all too young. Okay, that's all I got.
But not the 1916 one.
No, excuse me.
No, I remember.
Thank you.
I remember.
We just clarified that, okay?
You clarified that. Yeah, I was a polio pioneer back in the day. Yeah.
What does that mean?
That we were the first ones to get the shots, or actually, I think it was on a cube of sugar.
We got shots first. First, we got shots, then the sugar cubes came out in the 1960s.
I don't remember which. It must have been the shots then.
It was the shots first, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Didn't get polio.
That's true, it did work. Okay, thank you very much, UK. Now, we're going to enter into the public comment portion of our meeting, which we've started recently after the first of the year. So if anybody would like to call in with a comment, other than those that have a comment on our two public hearings, we'll wait till we get to those before we take those comments. And those are on the 16 seats for retail food stores, and the second public hearing is on lock boxes for houses with alarms. So want to wait for those two hearings before we have comments on those, but if anybody else would like to call in with a comment, something they'd like to let us know, you can dial in at 351-388-6331. And we'll give you just a couple of minutes to dial in while we're waiting for the signal. If somebody does dial in, I just want to say a few words. I'm sure everybody is aware that the governor has extended the, you know, the New York pause till May 15th. So that's another 15 days of New York pause, I think for good reason, although some parts of the country seem to be doing pretty well with the virus, and numbers of new cases in New York seem to be leveling off a bit. I don't think we're at the point where we can ease up, certainly not in Suffolk County. I mean, the daily numbers are beginning to get smaller, but we haven't reached that point where we want to ease up yet. So I think it's very important to keep this going till we get to the point where we're confident that we're not going to have a recurrence. So I think that's very important. And I'll just put it out there, since we don't have any callers yet, to the other board members. Barbara, Deputy Mayor Borzak, did you have something you want to say?
I did. I thought that it might be a good idea to let people out there know what's going on in terms of what we're doing in Village Hall and your officials during this pandemic. Every day, we have a conference call that we all sit in on with officials from the county, state, and federal government. They give us updates, and officials can express their concerns and ideas. And those issues, as well as the state directives, are posted every day on our Facebook page, as well as our website, so the public should feel free to go look there if they have any questions. There are people at Village Hall that can answer questions as well if you have them, so don't hesitate to call if you have a question. We're doing weekly updates on WLNG and WPPB radio, and any new information we try to put out. We remind people that Southampton Hospital has a hotline, which is 631-638-1320, and that's open Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to midnight, and your call will be answered by a nurse, so if you have any questions, you can call them. There are also COVID-19 testing sites that you can call if you feel like you need to be tested. We have Code Enforcement is still working, so you can call Code Enforcement if you see something that you think should not be happening, that's 324-4150. And of course, the Police Department, 324-0777. Please don't call 911 if it's not an emergency. We remind everybody to pick up their trash because we're having an overabundance of discarded gloves and masks, as well as dog refuse, which we hope people will pick up after their dogs as they're walking because we see a big increase in that. We're asking people not to congregate when they go out, to keep their social distances at all times, not to overtax the emergency services. Please call your local doctor, your healthcare physician if you think you need emergency services, and we will be there if you need us. But if you don't, then your doctor may suggest that you stay home at this time. And we're also suggesting that you shop during the low periods, when you have to go get groceries early in the day or late in the day. And we're reminding people that there are places that need donations, the food pantries, the Eleanor Whitmore Childcare Center, which is offering free childcare for essential workers, which is very important, and they need donations there. The Heroes Fund for COVID-19 at Stony Brook Southampton Hospital, you can access that on their webpage, and they're looking for donations to help with the supplies that they need to keep our frontline workers covered. And just, we'd like to remind everybody that we're all in this together. We all need to do our part, and we hope that we'll be through this soon. But if you have any problems, please don't hesitate to reach out to any of us or to Village Hall and get the help that you need.
Thanks. Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Just before I ask for another comment, again, if anybody wants to call in, please dial in at 351-388-6331, other than for our two public hearings, at which time we'll ask for comment on those. So anybody else? Tiger, Trustee Graham, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, just that I think that the village is doing the best they can with a terrible situation. The first responders are out there every day risking a lot, and I just want to say thank you. The police are out there every day, you know, doing their best, and you know, let's just keep our social distance.
Thank you. Trustee Rhodes?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd also just like to thank everyone, all the first responders. I've said it before, and I really mean it from the bottom of my heart. Thank you, thank you to everyone who is putting, you know, themselves out there for our safety. And, you know, I mean, I think we live in an amazing community. Just before we started this meeting, the moderator from LTV, Jason, said that, you know, he's making masks and wanted to know if we needed anything and any of them. So there are a lot of people doing little random acts of kindness that mean a lot, and it's an amazing community that we live in, and I feel privileged and honored to be part of it. And yes, we will get through this. It's difficult. Just today, you can probably hear my dog barking in the back. This is, you know, it's not easy, having kids home and, you know, staying home and all of that, but it's for the best interest of all of our health and safety, and we have to do what we have to do, and we will get through it. So thank you again, everyone.
Thank you. Just one more comment from me. I know we get emails and phone calls all the time from people, you know, wondering how we're doing because we're in a nonessential mode as far as our Village Hall employees are concerned, and DPW is on split shift and that sort of thing. So people are concerned that we're still able to get our work done, and that we, as a government, are able to function the way we used to. So I want to assure everybody that we are in fact doing that. Proof of that is, we're about to discuss and hopefully pass the resolution about allowing retail food stores to have 16 seats, as long as they conform to Suffolk County Health Department rules. We've also been discussing some more, some small policy changes which may help to expedite some applications in the zoning board and our other boards. We haven't gotten to the point where we're ready to discuss it publicly, but Billy Hayjack is working on some issues for us, and when he gets to that point, we certainly will present it to everybody and have a thorough discussion about it. Also, we obviously last month saved taxpayers $73,000 because of our terrific credit rating, and we refinanced some bonds, and we're able to do that for the taxpayers, which I think is great. Lastly, I just want to say, of course, we all appreciate our volunteers and our first responders, and they are doing an excellent job, and we really, really appreciate it. But I also want to recognize every other village employee who's been going above and beyond. For example, people in Village Hall have been staying late to get extra work done. They've all been asked to do more than their normal job. Becky, the village administrator, is in there very often till as late as 7:00 at night, trying to get things on our website and return phone calls and return emails. I myself am in there late at night returning phone calls and taking conference calls. So we are out there working for village residents, and everybody should know that and be aware of that. Again, DPW has done an excellent job. They are on the split shifts, but they have been working very hard, and as far as I can see, they're doing a great job in getting the work done that needs to be done. So I want to thank everybody for that. And I see, do we have any callers yet? I don't think so. No. So let's just move on to, next is a discussion of the Georgia WiFi and the flag pole that we intend to put up there. Now, we did have this discussion back in March, but I just felt that, since it was in the middle of winter, and we did put a, not a prototype up, we put a pole up down there that some people were not happy with, but it was in a different location than where this flag pole is projected to go. So I just wanted to rehash this, make sure that everybody's on the same page with this, and then I'd like to move forward with it at our next meeting. So I know David Collins, DPW, you're here. I wonder if you could just give us a quick overview about this WiFi and flag pole that we would like to erect at Georgia Beach?
Okay. The WiFi system is predominantly for emergency use, so we can have, it is spotty as far as cell phone service. The police initially approached me about DPW installation, and we agreed, of course. Initially, a pole was suggested, a small diameter telephone pole, like we use on Ocean Avenue for street lighting, and then it was suggested that perhaps a flag pole would be more appropriate. We don't have any type of way of displaying a flag at Georgia, like we do at Main Beach, and we could also use the flag pole to display the beach condition flags. And the flag would be raised and lowered by the lifeguards on a daily basis, and that's pretty much where we're at now. We're looking at a 20 to 25-foot pole to get the antenna high enough to reach over the dune, and this is pretty much where we are in the process.
Okay, thank you. Now, I know we changed locations. Did you mention that, that it's going to go down by where the bike rack is? Or that's the proposal?
Yeah, the proposed location is, we have a small paved area where there's two large bicycle racks, and it would, the pole, a flag pole would be located right to the rear of that spot. There's actually a stick with a flag on it to mark the location.
After our meeting on the 5th of March, I think you put a stake there where the flag pole is, and I think we all agreed that that's a great location, and it also maximizes the WiFi reception. So I think that we're all in agreement that that's a good location for it. And I think we all agree that a flag pole is more desirable than an actual utility pole.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's great. I checked it yesterday, and I liked it. I like, checked it again just to make sure it hadn't moved. And I like the location. I think it's a good location by the bike racks there.
Yeah, my only thought on this is that I thought that we discussed this and decided on a flag pole back in March. I thought we were going to be moving on this at the second March meeting. I'm sorry that we haven't gotten this done sooner. I thought we had it done, but it slipped through the coronavirus cracks, I guess. So we're going to move on this as soon as we can.
Yes. Yeah, that's exactly what happened. Unfortunately, the coronavirus hit, and there were other things that took precedent, and I was not quite sure that we had an adequate airing of it due to the time of year and then the circumstances right after it. So I thought it best to just discuss it one more time, and then if we're all in agreement, Becky, we need to put a resolution on for next meeting to transfer funds or whatever it is? Becky?
She's muted.
You'll need a resolution to cover the cost of installation because it's over $10,000.
Okay. So I would suggest that anybody that does have comments, that was unable to make them today, that they could certainly make them by email, or regular mail, or phone, and we would take those comments up until Friday. But it's my intention, as long as the rest of the board agrees, that we should put a resolution on the agenda for our next meeting, which would be, what, May 7th, correct, Becky?
Yes, May 7th.
That we transfer the funds necessary to complete the project. So is everybody in agreement on that?
Yes.
100%.
100%. I mean, to Tiger's point, and, you know, I also thought that we would have had a resolution on the, as we all agreed to do so on the meeting on the 20th. We've discussed this many times before as well, not just at the work session in March, just to be clear. You know, we've been talking about WiFi since 2018. We did Main Beach first, and then in the fall of 2018, we talked about the WiFi at Georgia, knowing that the reception is so poor there, and in an emergency situation, someone wouldn't be able to call 911. So I think that public safety is our number one priority, and I'm happy that we're moving ahead with this. We've been kicking this can down the road long enough, and we need to get it done. So thank you to DPW as well. They're going to be doing some of the trenching work, or all of the trenching work, which significantly reduced the cost of this project. And to Captain Long as well, our unofficial IT person, who was very helpful in helping us get the WiFi at the beach. So thank you to the Police Department as well.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think we're all in agreement, and I think we can move forward with it. So thank you all. All right, so next up is a public hearing. June, could you read the first one, please? June?
June, she's muted.
We'll give her a minute.
We're all learning this new technology.
We'll give her a minute to unmute. June, are you there?
It's it. Oh, yay, thank you, sorry. Introductory number 1, 2020, a proposed amendment to Chapter 278 zoning to allow takeout food stores to have up to 16 seats for a customer sitting area. Section 1, purpose, it has come to the attention of the Village Board of Trustees that allowing takeout food stores, retail stores that serve food, such as delicatessens and bakeries, to have a limited number of seating for customers would provide a valuable service to the community. This proposal eliminates the existing definition for retail food store because the definition is duplicative of takeout food store. The takeout food store definition will be revised to allow for up to 16 seats to eat within or outside of the establishment. The total number of seats may be a combination of indoor and outdoor seats, provided the outdoor seats are located on premises. Allowing a limited number of seats within takeout food stores will not change the underlying use of the property, and therefore, no impacts to parking or sanitary are anticipated. The number of seats permitted in this local law is based upon the number of seats set forth in the Suffolk County Sanitary Code for seating in takeout and full-service food establishments. According to Suffolk County Sanitary Code, once a takeout establishment exceeds 16 indoor seats or converts to full services, it is considered a restaurant and flow rates are calculated as such. The county refers to the 16-seat rule as single service, meaning a customer buys the product over the counter, and all products must be served in disposable containers. There is no waitstaff, no table service, and all utensils, cups, and plates must be disposable. In other words, the permission of 16 seats does not translate to table service or operation as a restaurant. This local law also adds takeout food store as a permitted use within the commercial and core district zoning districts. While the current zoning code contains a definition of takeout food store use, the use was not added to the list of permitted uses within the commercial zoning districts.
Okay, thank you. So it's important to note that any establishment that's going to be able to do this also has to abide by Suffolk County Health Code as well. And I think this is a good thing because it'll allow people to be able to congregate in the commercial core and bring more activity to the core. So we'll wait and see if we have anybody that wants to comment on this. Excuse me. Again, you can call 351-388-6331. And while we're waiting, does any board member have any comments?
Yeah, I do. I would like to say that back in the end of last year, Rose and I were approached by the owners of the Mary's Marvelous Building, and they brought this to our attention. We thought it was something that was easily done and that we should do it, and we brought it to the rest of the board, Ricky and Barbara at that time. And this just shows you how government moves in a positive way. We were able to get this done quickly, and I think it's going to have a great impact on us. So hats off to my fellow board members on this.
I think it's a great, I think it's a great move. I think it's great.
I also, I also agree that it's going to be great for the vibrancy of the village to be able to help businesses sustain themselves through the off-season. We did hear from the owner of 55 Main Street who has the juice bar, and he said this would greatly impact him in a positive way to be able to have seating inside his store, as well as many others within the village. And I want to be clear, too, it's up to 16 seats inside or outside on your private premises. So this is not outdoor seating on public sidewalks. We did, I did read something in the Star and Letter to the editor where someone was concerned that we were allowing outdoor seating in front of Mary's Marvelous. That is public sidewalk, and that's not what this would include. This would enable them to have seating inside Mary's, and I definitely look forward to the day where I can meet a friend at Mary's Marvelous and sit inside at a table. So hopefully, that will be sooner than later with the circumstances we're under now. But overall, this is a great first step towards, you know, instilling some vibrancy into the village. So I'm in full support, too.
Okay, thank you. We'll just wait a few minutes to see if we got any phone calls. Again, the number's 351-388-6331. And while we're waiting for that, I just want to say that, yeah, this is a great thing. It has full support of the board, and we're anxious to do it and get it done, and I think it's going to make a huge difference to the commercial core. And so we're very, we're all very excited about it. So we'll give it a few more minutes to see if anybody else wants to call in.
Yeah, and Rick?
Pardon me? Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, you might want to also let people know that on the next issue that we're going to be talking about, if they have any comments on that, they can call in, you know, so we don't have to wait, you know, for people to call in.
Okay, all right. Yeah, the next proposal up is the lock box for houses that have alarms, so the fire department is able to get into the building without having to break a window or something like that or damage property. So if you intend to have a conversation or want to have a conversation about that, you can get ready to call in as soon as we go to that hearing. But now, we're still on the 16-seat hearing, so waiting to see if anybody wants to call in. I'll give it another minute or two, and then I'll just remind you that you could make comment via email or telephone later on if that's, well, I think the intention is we're going to close the hearing today, so we'll give it a few more minutes.
Have a resolution, yeah.
Yep. So we'll just give it a few more minutes, just to remind everybody, we have discussed this before, so people should be well aware of it. There was article in newspaper about it or articles about it, so everybody should be well aware of it. I don't see, we don't have any phone calls yet, so I'll, can I have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? So carried. All right. June, could you read the second hearing, please?
Sure. Introductory number 2, 2020, a proposed amendment to Chapter 62 alarm systems to add emergency access via a key lock box to residential and commercial properties upon which fire alarm systems have been installed. Article 162-1, purpose 1, the purpose of this chapter is to establish standards and controls for the various types of fire intrusion pulled up and other emergency signals from fire and police alarm devices that require fire department or police response. Investigate, investigation or safeguarding of property at the location of an event reported by a signal which is transmitted by telephone or radio to the police or fire department from a central station as herein after defined. 2, this chapter requires owners and lesses of property, both residential and non-residential, upon which fire and/or police alarm systems have been installed, to register the same with the village clerk. In addition, all commercial In addition, all commercial structures and new residential structures or existing residential properties for which a building permit is issued, having farm fire alarm systems, which when activated, transmit a signal to a central alarm station, shall be required to provide a key lockbox and if required by the fire marshal, an information storage cabinet, which will assist the responding fire department in gaining access to the premises as well as providing important information, which can assist the responding emergency services department during an emergency call.
Thank you. I think Chief Terzah, you're here, could you make a few comments about this, please? Chief?
Sure, thank you, yep, thank you, Your Honor.
Okay.
I would like to thank the board for their consideration on this proposal that I put forward a couple of months ago. Anytime we ask for something in the, the building in the fire prevention codes, whether it's on a state level or local level, the commonality in the end game is always public safety, life safety. And this is certainly going to give us, the fire department, the tool to help protect life and property here in the village. And again, we, as I stated a couple of months ago, we've already got this in the town. It's been proven to work. And it's certainly going to be a tool beneficial to us here in the village as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other board member?
I have a question about this. Jerry, on my house here, I have a combination lock on the door that you, you enter a code and then you can get into the house. And I have that information in my profile with emergency services.
Yes, sir.
Does that obviate the need for me to put one of these boxes in? Or do I need to put one in for the information purposes?
If you don't have the information on file with us, is there a key override to the, to the box, your lock system?
Yes, there is.
Okay, yeah, so then you would, you would still have to, you'd still have to provide for it. If there's a regular key to it, you'd still have to provide for, or afford that. And inside there, some of the information that you're going to put is emergency contact information, caretaker codes, things like that, that will help us to override the, you know, the keyless entry, so to speak, as well.
Yeah, all right, because the keyless code is in the profile, so they would have that. But you want me to put the key override in the box?
Yes.
Okay, and since we're passing this law, even though I'm not applying for a building permit, I think I'm going to put one in.
It's, it makes sense and a lot of insurance companies, they do give discounts depending on the carrier and whatnot. And it just, it, it makes sense in the long run.
I'm also in full support of it. Another useful tool for the fire department, I think that we're all in support of it. So thank you, Chief.
Thank you, folks.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else, any comments? We'll just give one minute or so if somebody wants to call in. Okay, all right, thanks. Can I have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So carried. Okay, that concludes the public hearing portion of our meeting. So let's move on to the resolution and motions. Rose, could you please read the first five?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve claim vouchers for the month of April.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? So carried.
Make a motion to approve warrants number 49, number 51, and 52 from the general fund, number 48 trust fund, number 50 low SEP fund, and number 53 capital fund.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? So carried.
Make a motion to approve budget transfer schedule number one, reference number nine dated April 13, 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So carried.
Make a motion to approve departmental reports.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? So carried.
I'll make a motion to adopt a negative secret declaration in reference to introductory number 1-2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So carried.
Next, I'll make a, yes, I'll make a motion to adopt introductory number 1, 2020 as local law number 2, 2020, hereby amending Chapter 278 zoning to allow takeout food stores to have up to 16 seats for a customer sitting area.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? So carried.
Next, I'll make a motion to adopt negative secret declaration in reference to introductory number 2, 2020.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So carried.
Next, I'll make a motion to adopt introductory number 2, 2020 as local law 3, 2020, a proposed code amendment to Chapter 62 Alarm Systems to add emergency access via a key lockbox to residential and commercial properties upon which fire alarm systems have been installed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? So carried.
Next, I'll make a motion to notice for a public hearing to be held on May 15, 2020 at 11:00 a.m. at the Emergency Services Building, One Cedar Street, East Hampton, New York, or video, video, or via video conferencing if necessary, at which time all persons interested will be heard. For introductory number 3, 2020, a proposed local law authorizing a property tax levy in excess, excess of the limit established in general municipal law 3C. Hearing will be held via video conference and published by Local TV Incorporated, Channel 2022 LTV Public Access. Call in will be available.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So carried.
And next, to make a motion to notice for a public hearing to be held on May 15, 2020 at 11:00 a.m. at the Emergency Service Building, One Cedar Street, East Hampton, New York, or via video conferencing if necessary, at which time all persons interested will be heard pursuant to New York State General Municipal Law 247, with respect to the acceptance of a scenic and conservation easement from 25 Cove Hollow Farm Robot LLC and 25 Cove Hollow Farm Unicorn LLC over property located at 25 Cove Hollow Farm. And that's Suffolk County Tax MAC number, number 301-12-10-5.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? So carried.
I do like the names of those LLCs.
Me too.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 19, 2020, hereby appointing Anthony Long permanent title of police captain effective April 1, 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So carried. Congratulations, Captain.
I'd like to make a motion to employ Jamie Tulp as seasonal beach manager for the 2020 season at a salary of $32,000.
Second.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So carried. Congratulations to Jamie Tulp coming back. Go ahead, Tiger.
Right, I'd like to make a motion to accept Charlene Isarizari as a new member of the Ambulance Association in reference to an April 2 memo from Chief Chard. And if I have bungled your name, I heartily apologize.
Right, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So carried.
I have to really tip my hat to her. Anybody who's coming into the ambulance association during the middle of this is a brave person. So I really appreciate her coming in now.
And I think we all agree to that.
Yeah. Make a motion to deem items listed in DPW Superintendent Collins' April 7 menu as surplus. Approve all item deemed surplus to be listed for sale by Auctions International Online and accept all bids received that meet or exceed minimum bids set and approved disposal of unsold items.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? So carried.
And I make a motion to approve change order number five on the Dominique Shop Restoration Project in the amount of $89,366.67 in reference to a March 19 memo from Bob Heffner.
All right, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? So carried. Next is make a motion to notice the bidders for assorted fire department equipment as listed in Chief Terzah's April 10 memo, with the bid opening to be held on Tuesday, May 12, 2020, at 2:00 p.m. at Village Hall.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So carried. Next, I make a motion to accept 2020 through 2021 East Hampton Fire Department officers as per Fire Department election Gerard Terzah Jr., Chief Engineer, Dwayne Forster, First Assistant Engineer, Brian Stanis, Second Assistant Engineer, and Reed Jones as Treasurer, referred to April 5 letter from Chief Terzah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? So carried. And congratulations to all those elected officers. Next is to make a motion to notice the bidders for the lease of Sea Spray Cottage Number 8, with the bid opening to be held May 1, 2020, at 2:00 p.m. at Village Hall.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So carried. Next, I'll make a motion to accept the $53,000 bid received from Bartlett Tree Experts for the two-year touch elm tree prevention injection program as per the March 16, 2020 bid specifications.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So carried. Next, I make a motion to accept the $20,671 bid received from Landscape Details for the maintenance of Home Sweet Home Museum Gardens as per the April 15, 2020 bid specifications.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So carried. And last, I make a motion to adopt Resolution number 20, excuse me, 20-2020 to authorize the intermunicipal agreement regarding the management of 81 Ocean Avenue, Suffolk County Tax MAC 301131017, between Village, the Village of East Hampton and the Town of East Hampton.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? So carried. Okay, that includes our meeting for today. Anybody else have any last comments or anything?
Yeah, I do, Rick. There are two things I wanted to talk about. One, on the thing we talked about the last meeting, about the truck restrictions. I think we ought to have a study as to how many trucks are actually using these roads. I know, you know, Barbara has anecdotal evidence of how many trucks that go past her house, but I think we really need facts before we make any kind of decision on that. So I don't know if the, the NPV study, they're going to do a traffic study, whether we could expand that to, to have them look at that.
I think that would be a great idea to get some data and, you know, and not just have the anecdotal evidence. You know, we did also hear from someone, interestingly, who lives adjacent to the train trestle on North Main Street. And they haven't actually noticed too much of an increase of heavy truck traffic. So, yeah, I think that could be very insightful.
Yeah, and the other thing that I was thinking about this in terms of the left-hand turn onto North Main Street from the, from the highway. I think that we could ask the state to look at either putting a, a "Don't block the box" sign or a, put a stop line and a "Stop here on red" before people enter that intersection to make sure that intersection stays clear. And at worst comes to worst, we have a lot of well-trained police officers that could step in and direct traffic there if we did end up with a backup in the summertime. So I just wanted to throw those two things out there. And the other thing, we received a letter from a, a village resident about dog waste on the streets. And I know we have a dog law on the beach about picking up dog waste and we don't have one in the village. And I know that some people feel that the litter law can cover that. But, you know, maybe we just ought to add to the litter law code that people need to pick up after their dogs. Because when they don't, it's absolutely disgusting.
Okay, points all well taken. And I think we'll proceed in that fashion for the bridges. As far as the dog waste, we've consulted with our attorney that prosecutes our summonses and he's fully confident that the litter section as written fully covers that. I don't, I don't, personally don't think there's any reason to go any further. I've spoken to the chief about stiffer enforcement regarding that. And of course, it's always an issue because the police officer actually has to see the violation.
Right.
So like a lot of litter violations. But I'm confident that the chief giving his people a directive to make sure that they are a little stricter enforcing that rule, I'm confident that that will be done. And if we see any evidence that it's not, then we'll, we can take further action as needed. But I think, as my opinion, I don't know how everybody else feels, my opinion is I'm willing to go with what the prosecuting attorney has told me and he's confident that what we have in our littering section now fully covers that and there's no need to go any further with it. So I don't know.
Then, I mean, if, if that's the way everyone feels, I guess that's okay. But I would like to say to all the dog owners out there that are watching this, pick up after your dog.
I think it's, I think it's a little tricky because we don't have a leash law. So there can be random dogs running around, you know, without their owners, you know, that, that are not going to be picking up after them too. So that makes it a little bit more complicated.
I think we.
No leash law.
I think.
If you have a leash law, it's easy to, to, you know, to say, you know, that, that that's part of it, that you have to pick up after your dog.
Well, in the code, it says no dogs at large. I mean, I.
We don't have a leash law, but I think the real challenge to it is that you have to witness the violation, you know.
Yes.
Whether the dog is on a leash or not, it, it, it's more to the point that you have to, you know, witness it to write it. It, you know, the bottom line is it would be great if people just picked up after their dog.
It would be great if they would do that. It would be great if they put all their trash in the garbage cans.
I mean, there's such an uptick of the rubber gloves and all of that as well.
Yes, terrible.
You know.
We walked, we walked this morning and there were rubber gloves and masks along the sidewalk all the way up. It's, it's very discouraging that people can't walk, you know, 10 feet or 15 feet and, or take things home with them and dispose of them. I don't understand it, but.
And, and I've said this before, I appreciate all the work of the DPW. You know, they're out there very early in the morning on even regular days where there's so much litter in the village center and they pick it all up. And by the time we all go on our way around eight or nine in the morning, it's, you know, all picked up. But in the morning, first thing, if you drive around town or walk through town, you'll see a lot of litter and it's unfortunate. But I do thank the efforts of DPW for all that they do to keep it looking beautiful and pristine.
And there is, there is a way when you take off gloves, that you take one glove off and then put the, and then the other one goes inside and you pull everything inside out. And you, you don't contaminate yourself by removing the gloves that way and you don't have any contaminated surface on the gloves, that you could actually even put them back in your pocket and throw them out when you get home.
Right, okay, thank you. I think that we're.
Can I just, can I just ask a question about the weight restriction? So what is the direction here?
I don't think we want to do anything at this point. I think that we've heard from numerous people that.
No, 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 I'm just going back to where you just had this discussion about having someone do a study or, or traffic counts. So how is this moving forward?
Well, doesn't the contract with Nelson Pope say they're going to study traffic? Can't we just have them study that intersection as well?
Traffic, traffic study, traffic patterns or are you, or yes, but, you know, they weren't looking at that area for traffic patterns. I mean, they're looking at parking, not traffic. So are you, want someone to do a study on traffic patterns or, or counts?
Well, can we have Drew take a look at it and see what he thinks that we need for that area? Or does it have to be state, since it's a state road?
No, I mean, Drew could, could take a look at it.
I mean, just so we have an idea of what we're talking about. I mean, that, the idea of the stop box is, is a good first start. So, yeah, I think if we had Drew take a look at it, that would be a big help.
Yeah, that's probably a very good idea.
I think that's a great idea, too.
All right.
I think the only problem is that you're not going to really get an idea until the summer. Because right now, the traffic is not a problem, especially right now because very few people are on the road. But it's really July and August that tells the story.
Right, exactly. So, bottom, bottom line, I think, Becky, that if we ask Drew to take a look and he is able to do some study as the traffic increases, it'll be a big help to us. All right?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, anybody else? Motion to close?
So moved.
So moved.
Be safe and well.
Favor?
Okay.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor? We stay adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.